Four, three, two, one. Move! Come on guys. Oh no! Come on guys, that's Jesse, you got this. Better pass, better pass. Lake Alhead is taking control. Don't get around him.
Okay. This meeting of the Luray Town Council will now come to order. Will you stand and join me for a moment of silence, please? I'll ask Councilman Pettit to lead us in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jason. Danielle, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Mayor Nolkmar?
Here.
Mr. Vickers?
Here.
Ms. Lillard?
Here.
Mr. Shiro?
Here.
Mr. Pettit?
Here.
Mr. Sowers?
Here.
Mr. Webb?
Here.
Okay. Do we have any additions to or deletions from the agenda? Right, hearing none. Do I have a volunteer to do the consent agenda?
Sure.
Mayor, I've moved to approve the final consent agenda. Minutes of the regular council meeting, six thirteen twenty-two minutes of the special meeting, six twenty-eight twenty-two. Financial records ending June the thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Financial year twenty twenty-one twenty-two. Year-end budget adjustment entries and accounts payable totaling three hundred and five thousand dollars, three hundred and five million, six hundred and seventy-five, what was it? Three hundred and five thousand, six hundred and seventy-five. I think I got it right.
You got it. That's second.
You got it.
All right, so we move to second. Any discussion? Danielle?
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Okay, nobody signed up for general citizen comments? Anyone here want to speak? I think y'all are here for something else, so. All right, hearing none. Luray Downtown Initiative, Ms. Elliott.
Good evening. Just a couple of quick things. We have our next step session on August the twelfth at eleven a.m. to finalize the remote work pilot program that we've been doing. LDI sponsoring movie night tomorrow night. It's A Dolphin's Tale. Bring the kids and grandkids or yourselves and just come on down and join us at seven. This week, LDI will be launching our cookbook fundraiser that we will be doing this fall. So be looking for information on that. That's going to be coming out over the next coming days. And we're still in the process of getting ready for Sunflower Festival, and it looks like we're going to have a very nice event this year. Quite a few vendors. We've really received a lot of vendors, so it's exciting. So, that's about all I have.
Questions for Ms. Elliott?
Is this the third annual Sunflower?
Yes, sir. Sure is.
Thank you. All right, no public hearings? All right, special use or whatever, twenty-two dash oh four and five Baker Development. Steve?
Yes, sir. Council's requested to discuss the preliminary and final plat applications from Baker Development Partnership LLC for the subdivision of two parcels into thirty-one townhome parcels along the proposed Ray Court and the subdivision of four parcels into forty-eight townhome lots along the proposed Caterpillar Drive for the Luray Landing planned neighborhood subdivision. The planning commission will consider this, the subdivision plats at their August tenth meeting.
So we'll see it next month?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Rodney, what, y'all here can ask you a few questions? Just like curious, looking at it. On your townhouse, I was just like, just kind of going through everything. On Ray Court, now, that cul-de-sac, you'll finish that out with the road in one swoop? Is that the plan for the, what you're plating on Ray Court to be named?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
So you're showing the cul-de-sac there?
Yes, sir.
On Ray Court?
Yes, sir.
And that'll be, that road and everything will be built right out, the cul-de-sac?
Yes.
Okay. I just make sure. And on Caterpillar Drive, is that just a temporary cul-de-sac that you're putting in there, or will that actually terminate in a cul-de-sac at some point?
That's temporary at this time. Hope to move forward through the Luray Rescue Squad property.
Okay. And because, and connect through to the, I guess I'm just trying to look into, okay, so. In all the, on the open space that you've shown, and it looks like the lake area would be also, would be in the open space of the neighborhood? You know, that'll be part of the, I see that some of them are already dedicated to the property owner association, looks like, and it, you have, how many would you think you need to have built out before the property owner association would take that over?
I think it's two-thirds.
Is that, was that what it is? Okay. And just one last little thing, I was wondering, on, this is way in the future, but I know you're showing over where Luray Meadows is. You think it's anywhere that could connect to Luray Meadows? I know you're showing lots, you know, against Luray Meadows. I was just thinking, if you went to Luray Meadows and could get over to that road, I know that's, like I said, I know that's probably many phases away. I mean, you'd lose a lot there, but maybe you could make it up somewhere else. Would that be something you'd consider, or would that be practical at this, you know?
We can certainly look at it.
Okay. I mean, I just wanted to put it out there. It just seems like, if you were in that apartment complex and you wanted to get over, instead of having to go out and maybe come around, it'd be nice if it was, you know, just, you could come out to the parking lot, so. That was all.
I'm not sure how their house is actually aligned in there.
Yeah, I'm not really sure how the parking lot would, if it would, if it could even be doable, so we'll have to look at it. But how are things going on the, are you pretty happy right now as far as, I know you sold those at D.R. Horton, but are they, seem to be moving them along, or?
They finally got a model open, I think, two Saturdays ago. So hopefully they'll change and turn the ring.
I think I did see where one closed.
Yeah. I think they've actually sold three, have three more potentials since the model opened.
All right, that's all. Thank you.
Explain to me what open space means. Is that, who's going to maintain that area?
The homeowners associations.
Okay.
You know, and my hope would be, especially around the lake, maybe, yeah, the homeowners could, maybe the town could assist, maybe the developer is, makes some sort of space there that people could, you know, use it, because to get somewhere to go, there are sidewalks to walk to, it'd be nice to just have something. I think that Lake Jenkins there could be a nice feature.
Well, I think the airport is going to make us close there. We pushed in every way that we know how.
The lake?
It's supposed to be a drop-in.
Okay, just temporary, okay.
Right now it's actually a seven piece.
I got you. I kind of was an impressionist when looking at it, was this going to be something that was, okay.
It'd be nice, and we tried.
Okay.
Y'all haven't lucked with Fowl, you know? I would really leave it there. I think it's more of an addition.
Why don't they, why do they think you should close it?
Water Fowl posted there. But there is a provision in there, the way I understand it, that if there was an existing one there, it could be grandfathered in. But I still don't have anything writing back from Fowl. I have verbal saying I can leave if I do not have it in my.
I mean, it really could be, I mean, looking at it, I mean.
Nice amenity for them.
It could be a nice little, little place there. So, yeah, I remember talking about that many years ago. I didn't quite realize that, but if it could be left and become a, you know, an open space for the community, I think that would, that would be nice, yeah. Yeah, okay, well, let's all maybe keep that.
I don't have the river right across from it.
Yeah. Before you, before you pull the plug on it, let's make sure that there's not a way that we can't keep, keep that there and talk to the airport folks and see.
Airport folks and H. County.
Yes.
C. and S. folks.
Yeah.
They deferred back, the county deferred back to the airport. It's just stalled right now. It's supposed to be built in, and once we're done, it's a, it's a drop-in.
Just a drop-in, like, well, right there?
No, no, it's, it's a, it's still a stormwater management pond, but it's meant to be dropped.
Oh, okay.
And within twenty-four hours, for forty-eight hours.
So it's a detention pond?
So it does, it does drain now, but just kind of, just.
No, see, we actually dug that thing about ten or twelve feet deeper than what it called for, because we had intention of leaving it for a while. Until Fowl sort of used it as a, didn't want to lose their grain.
Well, maybe we can just look into that at some point here.
Yeah.
It would be nice to keep it, yeah.
May what, on their engineering plan, would it, I mean, could that still?
Yeah, certainly. I think that we'd have to make a few modifications at the cul-de-sac in Ray Court, but keeping that a wet pond would, you know, there was a small pond on the property back, back in the day when it was Virginia Bowman's, so the grandfather clause may be the way to go, and if we're able to communicate with the airport that we would like it to stay a wet pond and, and be an amenity for the neighborhood. I certainly think the council can do that, and I think construction-wise, it's only a few little modifications, but they've already looked at those, and they were gearing up for that way anyway, so I think that it would be something that would be fairly easy to accommodate if we're able to keep it.
Council, anybody else have any questions for Baker Development?
Thank you.
You know, thank y'all for coming this evening. Thank you for what you're doing out there. It's, it's exciting. All right. Mr. Burke, Parks and Rec Vehicle Emergency Procurement.
Yes, sir. Unfortunately, our Parks Department encountered a major issue with one of their nineteen ninety-two F-350. The most recent repair estimate was six thousand dollars, and they weren't certain if those repairs would be able to bring the hydraulic system back to life. So at this point, Parks had put in a request with their FY twenty-two twenty-three budget, and we had transitioned that into potential ARPA requests. So at this point, staff would request council's consideration of authorization up to eighty-five thousand dollars from the second funding of ARPA to allow the Parks and Recs Department to purchase either a new dump vehicle or a F-250, 350, and a dump trailer. We're having difficulties finding a dump vehicle on a lot right now, so our request would be to offer them a little bit of flexibility as far as identifying what vehicle or vehicle and trailer they can identify as quickly as possible to give them greater capability to haul materials.
Council, any questions? Covitz?
I've got a, one if, during a search for that vehicle, whether it be the dump or the combination truck and a trailer, are they going to be okay during this, the time it may take to, to find that, or do we need a?
They will be.
Rental vehicle for a month or two or something to?
They have, well, unfortunately, their fleet is fairly old. They've got a couple that are still operational, two thousand five and two thousand nine F-350, so they have the ability to, to move materials. And thankfully, right now, we're more into the end of mowing season, and they've gone through most all of the, the transport of mulch, but it's, it's trying to make sure that we've got a vehicle so that as we start doing either transport or moving trees to be planted in the fall, that they've got an operable vehicle that they can be relied on.
Well, you can't order one, can you? That's a year, year and a half, what is it, Brian? Are we still waiting for some trucks, or?
Oh, yeah. We've got two out there.
How long has that been?
April of twenty twenty-one.
That's when we ordered it?
That's when we ordered two, and still no word, so.
And, and the chief just heard that the, the four vehicles that council authorized for the police department.
They have a VIN number.
Yeah, they, they either just got onto the assembly line or nearing coming off of the assembly line. We're not certain, but they're.
October, probably.
Yeah. So, anything that, that, we're hoping that we'll find something. We actually thought we had found a dump vehicle on a lot. Jennifer contacted the salesperson, the salesperson said, gave her a quote, and then the salesperson's manager called Brian to increase the quote by fifteen thousand. So, we, we hope we'll find someone that's not as proud of their vehicle and truly wants to sell it.
No, I mean, I think we should go ahead and keep moving on it. It's going to take a while to get it, so.
Any value at all in the O one?
With it needing six thousand, I, I was half joking with Jennifer that we should simply park it over by Imagination Station, turn it into a play facility. She didn't appreciate that, that suggestion.
Maybe somebody else's tailing, we could.
Some of their vehicles are pretty rough. If you really.
Oh, I know. Parks and Rec has not gotten a lot of new vehicles.
What are they going to do with the two other ones that are, the O-five and the O-nine? Are they going to keep those?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. The, the hope is to, during the, the season, the early spring season, they, they do a lot of transport of, of mulch and dirt, and so they, they, they need every vehicle they can, can have to, to transport it, so we will try and continue to, to operate those as long as possible. But there will be, Jennifer has put together a, a plan to hopefully replace these vehicles in the upcoming fiscal years.
You ready for motion? I move the town council approve the use of up to eighty-five thousand dollars of the town's ARPA allocation for the Department of Parks Recreation to purp, to purchase a new dump vehicle on an emergency purchase order.
Second.
Second.
All right. Been moved and seconded. Any more discussion?
So how long do, I miss, how long we think, think it will take to get order?
If we found one on, another one on a lot, it could be tomorrow.
Okay.
Otherwise, Brian will have to get with one of the suppliers and, and put an order in, and in that case, it could be another year. But that's part of the request, to see if we can find it. The dump trailers are a little easier to find, but it's finding the F-350 that can then haul the, the dump trailer that's full. So we just want to give Jennifer the flexibility to find whatever equipment she can use.
Anybody else? More discussion? Danielle?
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
All right, Public Works and Parks and Rec Career Development Program.
Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir. As part of the FY twenty-two twenty-three budget, council included forty-one thousand dollars towards the development of, of a career development incentive program for our Public Works and Parks and Rec departments. Staff have been working with the superintendents to develop a plan that would provide a little more stability in the staffing that we currently have, as well as provide a career development plan for, that would be available to the former maintenance workers, now tradesmen positions, and give them different levels that they would need to achieve to advance to the next level. Basically, it would start out as tradesman one, just come on board. To advance to a tradesman two, you'd need to be here two years. Either identif, either receive your Class B license or pesticide technician. Oh, I apologize. This is actually, okay. I do apologize. I'm not sure if this is exactly it, but anyway, there's, there's some tiers to, to advance towards and allow our staff the ability to move up within that tradesman position. We've got, I believe, Jennifer has three tradesmen positions, and Lynn has five, and the, the tenure in those positions in each of the departments is either, is somewhere between less than two years to, I think, one has been here for ten or eleven years, and most all of, even the, the tenure individual, I think, is still right around thirty-two thousand dollars. So the hope is, is that this will provide them incentives to pursue certification, training, and then give them the reward to do that. Right now, Lynn is down three positions.
Three.
We've lost two, two career fire positions in, in other counties, and one of his staff went over to work at the water treatment plant. I'm sorry, two, sorry. So, again, what we're trying to do is to allow folks that come to work for us in those tradesman positions the opportunity to advance and, and know that if they dedicate themselves, there, there is career advancement. The other item that we're requesting council to consider is modification from, of this, the salary adjustment recognition for obtaining a, a commercial driver's license. Currently, it's two hundred and fifty dollars. What we would request would be council's consideration of the, of a fifteen hundred dollar salary adjustment for a Class B and then twenty-five hundred dollars for a Class A. What we're also finding is that individuals with commercial driver's licenses are in demand elsewhere, and this is another opportunity for the town to allow our staff members to know that when they do achieve this type of certification, that they are to be rewarded, and, and we want them to continue working with us.
Steve, did you or Danielle review to see the financial impact is in line with what they're saying? Because I'm seeing several items here that, it seems to me would put it over the estimate, but I, I don't know that.
Well, the, the, the estimate right now is that about twenty thousand dollars. Now, what we're proposing is a three percent salary adjustment for everyone except for the superintendents in Parks and, in Public Works. That would leave us with another twenty thousand dollars to go towards where they would be going towards these, these tradesman positions. In evaluating the folks that are currently with us, some of our new folks will need to be here another year before they can advance to the, the tradesman two, and some of our longer-term individuals will take a little bit of time to either get that pesticide applicator's license or the, the, the CDLs. And I do apologize, the tradesman two is a learner's for the Class B, and then the tradesman three is actually a Class B for the certified pesticide applicator. And again, in looking at it, we think that the twenty thousand dollars would be sufficient within this fiscal year to account for the remaining individuals that if they go after, if they can come forward and, and move up the ranks. We believe we have funding remaining from that forty-one thousand dollars.
But what about the, just the current, how many currently have these licensers that would instantly increase? Yes?
I believe we only have about three.
Yes, three of the seven.
In Public Works.
Right. And there are a couple of individual, long-term individuals in Public Works who have told Lynn they just don't have the desire to get a, a commercial driver's license. There is significant responsibility associated with that, and so.
But to answer your question, Joey, that, that amount there for the CDL, that's not retroactive. That would be moving forward if that's, you said you were coming up a little.
Okay, so.
So that's not, that's not retroactive on the folks that already have.
Okay, that might help clarify. So, so how would that, how would this practically function? Someone that's, so someone that's seasoned, they're already going to be in a higher tier on here, that's going to account for the, their CDL and the like?
So.
Because there's two problems, right? There's the potential that you're, you want to incentivize, but then the other folks are like, well, hey, what about me? So.
So the way we looked at this, when we, we sat down in several meetings and looked at this structure, and the way we looked at it is, you know, you may have someone who has been here under the two years, but certainly we don't want to inhibit any progression on their part. So even if they are still on a tradesman one, they could potentially go ahead and look at that CDL license and work toward that, and if they would do so, then they would go ahead and get that fifteen hundred dollar additional despite their years of service. We don't want to penalize anyone just because they've only been here, you know, less amount of time. But going through these different categories, we do have folks that are in every single category, and when looking at where they are now, where they really need to be, we did look at that three percent, which seemed very, very fair, and all these goals, especially Jen, when, when we were going through those, you know, she focused on, are these goals attainable? Are we still retaining those folks? But are we also giving them things to encourage advancement? We want to make those goals attainable and, you know, have items for them to work toward. We do have a number of folks already that are registered pesticide technicians, but this would just incentivize them to move up to that applicator license, so.
And obtaining either of those licensers, either the, the Class B or the applicator, it's not an overnight effort.
Right.
The state actually just changed it, so to, to get a class, a, a, a commercial driver's license, you now actually have to take a class through Laurel Ridge. It, it used to be that you could train with an individual that, that had a CDL and then go over to the, the DMV, and, and within a few months, you could obtain the, that, that Class B. It is now probably about a six to eight-month process to.
Basically, almost a year of home.
Yeah.
So how many vehicles do we have that require CDL operators?
It's not just the vehicle, it's also if you're towing a trailer that exceed with the, the whole gross vehicle. So potentially, right now, we've got two dump trucks that require Class Bs, the.
Yeah, the Streetsweeper.
Yeah.
The sewer jet, when it's full of water, hook to a pickup qualifies. We've got two dumps that qualify. We're going to be purchasing some additional equipment, new coming in. One of those, when it's loaded, will, will require one, and will not. So normally, we have five vehicles that require. We've been buying smaller dump trucks now, you know, non-CDL dump trucks, but when you pair that up with a tandem, like heavy equipment trailer, and you put a backhoe or a bucket on there, you exceed the JVWR, and then at that point, you need to have a Class A driver or at least a Class B if they're operating within the confines of locality. So we typically have from five to seven is the answer.
And how many CDL operators do we have now? Three.
Well, Dave Sauer is four.
Yeah. With, with Lynn and, and, yeah. Yeah, with, with Lynn and, and, yeah, with Lynn, Pat, Mike, who are beyond the, the tradesmen. I think we've got...
And Dave Sowers.
Yeah, and Dave Sowers, so... And we've got at least one tradesman in Public Works that has a Class B. But the, the hope is that we'll get more folks so that the, each of the departments is able to then have multiple crews and not rely on the, the senior staff to, to transport.
I will say it's a little different than I expected when we previously discussed it. I thought it was more of an more of a advancement program, and now it's more of a fifty-fifty split with a retention and an advancement.
Well, I will say that, you know, right now, we are really seeing a lot of folks that are looking elsewhere. I know Lynn has consistently struggled with retaining folks in his department.
And...
And that's fair. Yeah, that's fair. I just, it wa- it was surprising when I saw it, is all, at least for me. Maybe I missed the...
The, the, the main, main reason that we arrived at that three percent is that it will get the majority, if not all, of the tradesmen above fifteen dollars an hour, and that's literally what we're competing with is most, every other place, you know. If you could go work somewhere and not have the outdoor activity, that, that's the competition that we're in, unfortunately. The other thing along with this is that, right now, Virginia in 2024 is scheduled to have a minimum wage of fifteen dollars an hour, so basically...
Right, and we're significantly under that.
Yeah, so, uh, uh, i- i- in 2024, we would probably have to come back to y'all and adjust this about three thousand dollars upward for each of those levels, because the tradesman one would then be starting out at a fifteen, at a thirty thousand, thirty thousand, thirty-one hundred.
Well, I think it's, I mean, I think it was Jason that said maybe that, you know, the Public Works Department and Parks and Rec Department have always been, they do their job every day. You don't hear a lot, you don't hear a lot requests from them, and it's some, uh, some pretty nasty jobs some of them have, so I think it's, I think it's, I think it's long overdue.
Do we need a motion to approve this program?
I move that Town Council approve the incentive and career development program for the departments of Public Works and Parks and Recreation as presented. I further move that budget funding be available for staff advancing in a tradesman position. I further move that the Town Council approve the amendment to Chapter ten-point-two licensure salary adjustments of the Town's Personnel Policies Manual to increase the salary adjustments for commercial driver's licenses.
All right. The movement is seconded. Any more discussion? Daniel?
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Sauer?
Yes.
Mr. Pett?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Burke, code amendment direct, uh, derelict buildings.
Yes, sir. At your June twenty-sixth work session, staff presented the code amendments for blighted properties and derelict buildings. At that time, council had a, a number of questions that the town attorney has provided responses to. Since that time, there's also been a clarification and updates to the draft ordinance amendment to conform with the current state code with regard to the amount of time that the tax abatement would be provided. And so, we simply wanted to present an opportunity for council with the town attorney here if there's more, what-if or, or other questions that y'all might have about the implementation. Talking before the meeting, there will probably be a number of questions if, once we consider the adoption of this. If we go through the first effort of it, I'm sure that we'll have things that will pop up just because we've never done this before, and there's been questions about how we would be able to track all of this information within the, the town's current finance software. I don't know that it is available, but we'll, we'll work with the, the town treasurer to determine if we'll have an Excel spreadsheet, or if there is software that, or our software can provide assistance towards that.
Yeah, Danielle, I'll just ask Steve that, just to make sure it's not creating some undue burden where it's this, if we ended up with fifty of them and they all expire at different points, and we're having to do all these offsets.
That's something we're definitely going to have to look at. I guess if, if we have fifty of them...
I mean, I don't suspect we will, but you...
But I don't know that we'll be quite at that, I'm going to have to...
So, how's it tie in? We'll have to do the abatement through the county, correct? I mean, will we have to coordinate with the county on that?
Yes.
So, they're on board with helping us?
We've not reached out to them?
Did they?
But no, yeah, once we know whether we want to do it, I guess, it's part of it, right?
I, I don't think that they'll have issue with it, I think, as long as, I, 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 I think they'll be able to, but we may not ask them formally yet.
Good point, though.
Steve, I wonder if maybe a good idea, just maybe to, for you to pick a few properties and just kind of guess at maybe the demolition cost or something, and then show us what, you know, based on what we're going to lose over fifteen years and what impact that might have on our budget, and, you know, some of the properties we looked at. Again, I think you know enough to...
Yes, sir.
To get some rough cost or rough figures, maybe that would help. I'm, I'm still a little fuzzy on this tax abatement myself, so...
We can definitely do that.
Maybe some samples or examples, whatever.
Yeah, and I think it's important, too, that when we roll this out, that we do some kind of news or some type of press release on it, what, how we're doing it, because of, the impression that I'm hearing out there is, I don't think it's the way it, I, I think a lot of people think that we're going to be able to just walk down the street and tell everyone to paint their buildings and clean up their, clean up their garages and...
This is the property maintenance code.
This is not a property maintenance code, and I think we need to make it real clear when we roll it out what we can and can't do with it.
So, what would be like a, you have a, a house, that gentleman that came in was on Mead Street, and, you know, the house was just totally, almost consumed by, you know, brush and overgrown. So, how would, and how would this work? We would use this to clean the property up the town and then basically...
Well, the, for, for, for the public's clarification, the way that this is drafted, it only applies to vacant property, so we're not looking to displace anybody.
Right, 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 exactly, right.
That is, that is, is blighted. But specific to those, those properties on Mead, well, what the town attorney has indicated is that we would, as part of adoption of this code, we would identify a checklist of various criteria that a property would have to meet before we could implement it, that it's been vacant, that it's got utilities disconnected, things of that nature. Once we've identified a property and it does meet those things, those, those, those issues, staff would present it to Town Council. Council would then consider the, the status of it and then authorize the staff to pursue notification to the property owner to say the property is, is dilapidated or, or blighted. Please provide us a, a plan within ninety days, I forget, I believe it is ninety days, of how you will address the blight or the derelict condition. If we hear back from them within that ninety days, we will present to you their plan. The, the plan is supposed to be detailed enough that it gives, "I will do this within so many days, this within so many months." At that time, council then would consider their plan. If their plan is acceptable, they would then pursue it. If they, if it's not acceptable or if they don't provide a plan, I believe the code would then allow council to develop what we perceive as being the appropriate response. And then we would work through our, our contractors to remedy it or demolish it, at which point, I believe we would put a lien on the property for the costs that we incurred. If the property owner pursues the improvements, that's where we get into the abatement tax credit that they would not be, they would not lose money from the, the, their taxes. They would be given a credit. If the property had been valued at a hundred thousand dollars and then upon demolition, it was valued at fifty thousand, there would be a, a tax credit, not that full fifty thousand value, but the, the tax, our tax rate applied to that valuation difference, that they would be credited towards their future tax bills from the town for the next fifteen years, so that they can at least recover some of the...
If they improve the property.
If they improved it. Now, that one I'll defer to Jason. I'm not sure how they, if they get a, I get, I assume if the value goes up, then the tax rate at which they are taxed remains at the previous. If it was, if it was valued at a hundred thousand dollars, they made improvements, and then the valuation went up to a hundred and fifty thousand, they would continue to be taxed at that hundred thousand dollar valuation for the next fifteen years?
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, most likely, we're not going to hear anything from most people. I mean, I mean, that's, that's probably the...
Steve, does the town have any blighted buildings ourselves?
That we own?
Yeah. I'm wondering before we roll this out...
We got rid of ours out here.
I'm asking, is there nothing else you can think of?
No, sir, and, and, again, the, the, no, sir. I believe, I believe we maintain everything. The one home that we have over at Dean Park, while it's not occupied, we have continued to mow the grass, we've continued to trim trees, we've continued to make sure that it is secured from access. So, while it is vacant, it is, it, it would not approach the definition of blighted or derelict.
That was a fair question.
Yes, sir.
So, I'm sorry. Is there, let's say you, you determined one's blighted or, or derelict. Is there, the appeal to that is us?
Yes, sir. Uh, you, uh, just, our, our determination, we present it to y'all and, and you guys would make...
So, we determine.
Yes, sir.
And so, I understand it, right? So, it, it does convey, this tax benefit does convey, so it could also be something that helps incentivize the sale of a property as well?
Yes, sir.
Very much so, right?
But if the property value is increased, does it, there's no effect on the taxes?
Well, no, it would stay at the hundred thousand. If it's a hundred thousand property, they increase the value to a million, they pay a hundred thousand worth of tax.
Well, again, I don't think we're looking at that dramatic. I mean, to me, if it's a vacant lot and there's an old house and somebody tears it down, the value of the lot's gone up because everybody doesn't have to remove it all, but it's not going to go up that much.
Lead into a, a what-if, that I've got a property, and it's valued at, at, at a hundred thousand. I tear down the, the building, and then I make improvements to the property. This is more for the, the town attorney. I, I, I build a three-hundred-thousand-dollar home on the lot that, due to the abatement, is capped at fifty thousand. Does the code allow us to recognize the improvement, or is it fixed at the abatement level?
So, i- in the event that there was a structure that was demolished, the cost of the demolition would be the, the amount of, of the abate, abatement. That would be offset over a period of fifteen years. If there was then a new structure built on the property that improved it and increased the value, that would be, I think, a separate, separate event and a separate assessed increase that wouldn't have the benefit of, well, certainly, if there's credit left over from the previous demolition costs, certainly that credit might apply against the increased taxes assessed on the subsequent improvement.
Otherwise, you could get real creative with that, couldn't you?
And that's where getting, getting Danielle the correct software to track all of that would be critical, and we'll, be- before our, our work session, we'll, we'll try and track down what...
I still think a more likely scenario is we go in and clean a prop, I don't know, town staff, or we hire someone to go up and clean a property, and let's just say it's, you know, fifteen, fifteen thousand dollars is what it costs, our time or our, whoever we hired. Then, and again, a lot of these properties have been sitting there for years in some cases. I don't think we're going to hear anything. Just kind of take me through more time. If, if it was to say fifteen thousand dollars, we cleaned it up, you know, the gentleman up on Mead Street's happy, "Hey, thank you, we cleaned this up." We now have a fifteen thousand dollar bill.
Well, if, depends on how we do it. Right now, if we're working through the high grass, then once we incur our cost to mow or clean up the property, we assign a lien on the property for that cost. If it's blighted and we go through the effort, I believe we still have the ability to assign the lien for our improvements to the property.
Probably just to stabilize it. I mean, we wouldn't be going in and tearing the whole thing down, but just to stabilize it.
Then, then we assign the lien, and most likely, there's no abatement to that because we incurred the cost.
And I'm sure a lot of these properties also have tax, outstanding tax balances, too.
The majority don't.
Oh, really? So, they, they're paying the taxes on it, but not, that's it, yeah?
Yes, sir. We have a, we, we've encountered, I believe, one, in the, the ones that we looked at that, that had a, some delinquency, but all the...
Thanks, David.
Yeah, at, at, the, the remaining ones were, were current. Uh, unfor- and unfortunately, it's primarily absentee property owners that will, you know, we get a tax bill and they...
Just turn it off. At the very minimum, if, if we clean properties up and then the, the owners knew that they were incurring extra fees on their, that it would be, you know, be against, a lien against property, then that might encourage them, say, "Hey, paying, you know, two hundred bucks a year is one thing, being hit with several hundred dollars a year for cleaning the grass up or stapl- you know, that might be a different thing."
Or you're going to get, some people are just going to let the, let it accumulate and let it stay there, too. I mean, that's going to, I mean, let the, let the outstanding balance just ride. I mean, that's what's going to happen.
But it would be, it wouldn't be collectible through our treasurer's office. It'd be billed to them. I mean, if we, if we went in and did work or cleaned property.
We'd have to put a lien on the property and sell the property, correct?
The, yeah.
We would have to...
Or it could be just something we just add to the tax bill or like that, no?
No, you'd have, you'd have to sell, we would have to sell the property.
Well, going and cleaning up the grass is like, you know, if we had to, I mean, all we have to do. They just sit there forever, so I think it's better than...
Those are obvious properties, aren't going to be the challenge. The challenge is going to be, someone says, "No, it's not blighted," and if mine's blighted, why isn't this one blighted? And, I mean, at, at the end of the day, to really make it work, the town has to invest the money to fix them up and then, or ultimately, invest the money to sell them and get the money, and, I mean, to sell them, take them to, to retain, to get the money back that we put in it. So, it's, I think it's a good thing we're doing it. But in working with some of these, I just want everyone to know that it's not going to be as clear-cut as a lot of people think it's going to be.
And, and it's not instantaneous. Again, there's, there's, it's kind of like our, our high grass. Once somebody observes high grass at a home, they notify us. We have to provide the homeowner a certain amount of time to respond and, and cut the grass of their own volition. If they don't, then it's, it, we have to hire a contractor, and unfortunately, every property is different. It's, we simply just can't have a per-square-foot mowing, because some of the properties, there's debris in the yard, which prohibits somebody just to go in, so it, it, the, the police department is challenged to do the code enforcement with high grass. It, it's not a, as simple as people, you know. I, I just, I, I go out and I hire somebody to cut my grass. It's not that simple, unfortunately. And, and I assume that implementation of, of this will be as challenging.
I think it's good. I mean, don't get me wrong, I think it's a good thing. It's, it's long overdue. We need, we need something like this. We really do.
A lot of people have commented to me that they think it's way overdue.
Yeah.
Thank you for, you're trying to, thank to us for trying to...
Yeah, yeah.
I just think the far majority of people in town maintain their property to a reasonable level, the far majority. So, it's, it's...
Don't have pride of ownership, there's not a whole lot you can do.
I even cut my grass, but I pay somebody.
All right, so we'll wait until the, the work session, and again, Steve, you can maybe work up some examples as to how, what, what effect it would have on the budget, if we did several of these, or how many, just pick a number. All right.
I, and your, your last item for consideration is just general discussion of, of our, that the town has received our, our second installment, so that is available for council, and, you know, we're, we're hoping that over the next few months, council can arrive at how, how y'all would like to allocate those fundings. And staff have presented a number of, of wishless items, not necessarily wishless items. We've got a number of improvements at, at our plants and within Parks and Rec and Public Works and the police department. and Public Works and the police department that weren't able to be included in your first consideration. But the water and, and primarily Joey's water plant concerns about the pumps for the raw water feed and, and the finished water. And he is working towards getting updated cost estimates because unfortunately, he's already been told that the, the pump costs have gone up by twenty-five percent. And so everything's getting more expensive. But we are working to update those costs, but we simply want to give you all the opportunity. And if there's information that y'all need as far as any of the other opportunities for, for allocation of ARPA, we'll try and provide you any information so you can develop that plan.
We have, so it was a two point six million, of course, we've already spent a hundred of it tonight, didn't we? Or two point five, we spent a hundred on the trucks.
So, Danielle, make sure I'm on the, so according to this, we've allocated two point six three three million?
Allocated, yes, sir.
And we gotta add eighty-five thousand to that, I guess.
Yes, sir. But only spent is about eight hundred and twenty-seven.
Now, on the, where's Joey's stuff on this?
Joey's list is under, let me get to that. Water improvement.
Last page, isn't it?
There, the finished water building, raw water building.
Well, wouldn't it be on this front page, this cover sheet?
Because the cover sheet was only indicating the items that council has authorized.
Because that, that front sheet, just what's been authorized?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So, all right, well, yeah, well, I don't wanna, we can talk, I guess at some point we can talk about what we're gonna also spend. But on the, um, street sweeper, for instance, is that, we got a bid at two fifty-nine, eight hun, eight ninety? On the, that's on the cover sheet, the front, the first one? Like a street sweeper?
That's an allocation. That item's already been ordered.
Yeah, the street's for two hundred thousand, but it looks like we got a bid for two fifty-nine.
Two fifty-nine, eight ninety.
So do we need to just go ahead and?
Well, then. There were some savings under the sewer camera equipment, so.
Okay.
All three items together were actually less than the cumulative total of the three items through ARPA allocation, so.
Yes, sir.
They're noted in the spreadsheet that I think Danielle's keeping, so.
Steve, I've been hearing pleas from page one for some of this money. Have you seen or heard any of that?
Originally, they had come in and requested funding. I believe what council had, had talked about previously was developing a program or an application so that any and all non-for-profits could put in a request. That, that's, y'all can, can do a, a, a direct allocation tonight if, if, if you wanted to collectively or you can ask us as staff to put together a, a program, an application program.
Yeah, I, I would like, I mean, we talked about it, because it kind of has been bothering me since we've had page, page one, I think, choices. And then I know the, I'm sorry, Arise La Ray has been in, I mean, it's, it's small, but, I mean, I, I would say those three organizations have been here, at least two of them have been here. I would, I would just, I'd like to allocate those three organizations ten thousand dollars apiece. I know it's small, but for right now, it's something as we still work through this. I know the fire department has asked as well. And we did, we did purchase them a truck in the, yeah, I mean, I mean, I'm, I'm up for giving them an allocation as well tonight. All, all, I would be up for, for all those four right now at ten thousand dollars, but that's just my humble opinion if people were in, if the rest of the council was in agreement. And we can come back maybe the next work session and work through the rest. But yes, those organizations have, have waited and I think it's a small token for what we kind of have, have done. And we kind of routinely spend fifty, sixty thousand dollars on different things. I just feel sort of, that's my personal opinion.
I'm, I'm not against it. I'm ruling that out. I still, me personally, I, I believe that the town issues are what we've got to address first. And what sticks in my mind is just like what you said, Joey gave us prices before when we originally started this, and now we're looking at costs that are twenty-five percent more than if we had ordered those, ordered those pumps or done that then. I know we're not talking about a whole lot, I'm, I'm just personally, I, I, I think our, just my opinion, that, that we take care of the town first on these necessities and these inevitable costs that we've got to have taken care of to operate and provide the services that we're responsible for to the citizens. And if we can get that done and we have a surplus, then I'm fine with helping other organizations. But I think we've got to take care of our own first on what's the town's responsibility to its taxpayers. That's just me.
I agree with that.
Well, then maybe we just, maybe the next work session, we kind of need to maybe roll our sleeves up and try to figure out, and, you know, ultimately, these funds, they have saved the taxpayer. We've done things that I, I don't know what we would've, I don't know what we would've done without it.
I agree.
Regardless, things we got on price, but, you know, we didn't have the money back then either. So I just, and I think we've been smart by taking our time on it, you know, to a certain degree. So I, I just think we'd probably need to come to a next month or two, have a, the rest of it allocated.
When it comes to the nonprofits, I think, I really think we need a process and an application that answers some questions about the nonprofit and how it's gonna be used and a budget for the nonprofit, how many they have. I mean, some of these things that we discussed before, because you just start, I mean, and I understand what you're saying. I mean, there have been a few that have shown up and they've been very persistent and very convincing, I, I would add. But I just think when we start, when we cross the line and from what Jason was saying, from services to the taxpayers, to start taking the taxpayers' money and giving it to the nonprofits. And I think we, we have to have some kind of standard.
And to me, the, the very biggest of those is, is it actually benefiting the citizens of the town of La Ray? Because that's, that's who we are, we're La Ray. So that, that's my first and foremost litmus test for anything we give money to, so if it's.
All right, any other thoughts on that? Steve, anything else on ARPA?
No, sir.
Which covers it. Mr. Botkins, you have anything for us?
I don't have anything, mayor, thank you.
All right, any council comments on anything? All right, Beau, on behalf of the council, I do want to express our, our deepest sympathy and the loss of your, to you and your family, the loss of your mother this past week. And you bear in our thoughts and prayers and, again, our deepest sympathy. Um, there's a dedication of the new sign up at the Andrew Jackson School. That is Saturday at one o'clock. You'll probably seen the sign out front that's all covered up, we can unveil that Saturday one. The joint meeting of the counties and towns August eighteenth. I cannot be there, Ligon says he might be able to.
I'll, I'll let you know tomorrow.
Okay. Anybody else want to volunteer?
Backup volunteer?
I did the last one.
Well, this could be your last, this could really be your last one.
When is it?
Uh, the eighth, Thursday night, the eighteenth at seven.
I'll get up.
Okay.
That was perfect.
How'd you know that?
Who's birthday? Well, Joey, maybe, that what a, what a wonderful place.
Are y'all gonna have a gig?
Let me call that, and we'll have a night there, have a nice big cake.
I could do better for no offense.
Mayor's saying he'll come out the cake. All right, no, okay. Uh, the parade, the fair parade, I think some of you replied, I'm willing to do it. Anybody else?
I'm willing.
What, do they, do they float or what?
A Ford Fusion float.
We're trying to get the golf cart.
Wait, I was gonna, the, the club cart, is that?
We're trying, we're trying. That's a fuel.
I thought it just needed a battery.
Well, yeah, it ain't just a battery. I mean, it's just a battery, it needs six or, six or eight.
Oh, oh my gosh.
The paddy wagon golf cart does.
It's that weekend.
If you want to be in front and the rest of you in the cage.
I don't think we're gonna squeeze in that, can we?
Is the parade tonight?
Can, we're not, I'm not.
The parade is, uh, when did we figure the parade was? Monday, the twenty-second?
Oh.
Okay.
The fair parade, yeah. You have something nice we could drive in, ride in, Jason? Your repertoire of older vehicles?
Everything needs more.
Nothing to start, right?
If you're willing to push, we have a.
What time is it?
We can push.
We can tow it through the parade, we can ride in the back, yeah.
Six, Joey, I, I think lineup is at five. Lineup at five, it's ours to six.
That's right, that's right, thank you.
Miss Stephanie, you've said you're not gonna be.
Well, I mean.
You should be out there campaigning.
I, I asked if it was, the same question, if it was gonna be a float or the Ford Fusion. And he said Ford Fusion. I said, I think I'll watch from the sidelines with my family.
Well, I mean, is, is the club coming? That would be neat if we could get, I mean, is that an option?
Yeah, we're looking probably twelve, eighteen hundred dollars, but we're, Mike's open to it.
We'll let you know if it'll be, if it's by the Monday.
All right, any other suggestions? All right, I guess that's all I have. All right, well, you'll get back to us on the.
Well, we don't make that, y'all, don't make that the only reason why you're not in it.
I don't know, there are always.
If you want a pickup truck and, and if you want to be in the back of a pickup truck, we can do that as well. Chief might be able to jumpstart the, the, the Hummer if, if y'all want to be on top of that.
It's the fair parade, it should be tractors and haywagons. Tractors and haywagons.
Can I have a backhoe?
If, y'all want us to try and get a tractor and, and have y'all sit on a, a hay bale?
Who has a tri, I mean, I have a tractor, I guess would work.
Oh, no, we, we have.
We have a tractor, okay, well, that'll work better. We have a hay wagon.
I think we did.
We can get one.
We really oughta be in that parade, y'all. The fair's been here forever. Also on hay bale.
All we need would be like hay bales or something with a sit-horn, wouldn't it?
We'll, we'll try and get creative. Jennifer's got incentivized employees now, so we'll see.
Yeah, there you go.
I got small hats.
Good. We can wear bib overalls and small hats. When is the work session, then? Is that?
Twenty-third?
We normally meet in August, don't we take a month off there at some point or not? We normally meet in August because of the fair and all.
The mayor sets the agenda, if you tell us don't come.
We used to not meet in August because of the fair. Yeah, yeah.
We hit fair week.
What do y'all want to do?
What, do we have anything pressing?
Other than ARPA, nothing that I'm aware of, Mr.?
Just cancel them for right now unless something comes up that'll go with everybody.
When's the county thing, the eighteenth?
The eighteenth. All right, that's all I have. Anybody else? Meeting adjourned.